Order the Board of Commissioners regular meeting on Monday, November 9th, 2020. And as is our custom, we'll begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Jay, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. Would anyone rise for the pledge?
Pledge leaves it through the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, the first order of business is the public meeting concerning the wastewater treatment system improvements, engineering report, and environmental information document. And Carl, I believe you have a presentation to show with.
Yes, Cassandra has it and she's gonna bring it up, I guess.
Very good.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody's able to see that? Okay, so just again, my name's Carl Scharf and I'm with the Wooten Company. And we've been assisting the town in the wastewater treatment system improvements for around the last four to five years. And what this presentation is about, it's a requirement of the funding agency in order to get funding for the project. And it's part of what they call a Fonzie process, which is a public process to inform the public of what this project is all about in terms of the wastewater treatment system. You can go to the next slide, Cassie. So what is an E R E I D report? So the E R portion of it stands for engineering report. And typically in this report, we details future details of future Pittsburgh wastewater needs, alternatives to meet those needs, and alternative costs. Then in there, you select an alternative description, cost layout, and financial aspects for the selected alternative, which I'll get into a little later. The E I D portion, that stands for environmental information document. And what that portion of the project is about, or the report is about, is impacts from the project construction that may have an environmental effect. In the E R E I D report, that particular part, the E I D portion of it, is section seven and appendix G of the report. S C I, that stands for secondary and cumulative impacts. This is a requirement that was added out a little later in the process. And what that S C I document does, it's in appendix end of the report, it details mitigation measures for development going forward. Next slide, please. Why is Pittsburgh doing this project? As probably everyone is aware of, there is increases in future population, expected development growth in the area, including Chatham Park, means increased wastewater flow. Now, the existing wastewater treatment plant, as it is, was gonna have a permit upgrade coming up soon anyhow. And there was future discharge limits for nutrients, which are total nitrogen and total phosphorus mass limits, which are listed below their six milligrams per liter, and then three milligrams per liter, which a permit limit that does not exist right now, and a total P limit of point one four. So the reason we're doing this project is the growth in those new limits and the existing wastewater treatment plant cannot meet these nutrient limits that are listed above, nor the future flows that are projected to happen in the next 20 years. One of the challenges of this was that the wastewater treatment plant site is bordered by the river and it has a relatively small area in which to expand. The existing wastewater permit, discharge to the river of the clean water after treatment is to existing Robeson Creek discharge point. And that permit is permitted by the Department of Environmental Resources permit. And so the reason we're doing a project is to take care of future growth and to meet tighter limits in a permit. The population summary is, we went through about a two to three year period working with Chatham Park and working with the town to project future population for a 20-year period. In terms of the funding agency in this report, the the projection time period is a 20-year period. And listed below are the population projections for Pittsburgh and its ETJ area without Chatham Park for the next 20 years, which totaled about 16,000 people. And then Pittsburgh ETJ area with Chatham Park totaled around 47 to 48,000. From those population estimates, we were able to estimate flows based on the number of people that would be projected into the future. And those are listed below with, again, without Chatham Park. It's, that's 1.7 million gallons per day. And with Chatham Park, the 20-year projected flow is 4.41 million gallons per day. There is a note in this slide which indicates, and this has to do with the treated water from the existing wastewater treatment plant supplies water to 3M through a contract the town has with 3M company. And that's just something that had to be taken into account as we go forward here, no matter what alternative you look at. Next slide, please. And this is a graphical representation of the flow rates over time. The green line is the town projected flows in ETJ without Chatham Park. And the red line is the projected flows with Chatham Park. The different lines you hear, you see here are the dotted line at the bottom is the existing treatment plant capacity. The next line up is the permitted capacity for discharge. And then the top line represents the actual discharge permit for the town. Has two parts to it. One is Hall River discharge and one is Robeson Creek. And that top line is the total existing permitted discharge flow. So you see that as you get beyond about 2035 there, the projected flows exceed the existing permitted limit. So going forward, any alternatives, we have to take that into account. A next slide, please. So what alternatives were evaluated in this E R E I D? The Division of Water Infrastructure, which is the funding agency, requires that you look at a no-action alternative. That was looked at. As indicated previously, the existing plant does not have the flow capacity, nor can treat the nutrients required for the future. So the no-action alternative is not a feasible alternative. The other three alternatives here, alternative two, three, and four, these were looked at to meet those flows shown on the earlier graph. Alternative two was a alternative to refurbish the Pittsburgh wastewater treatment plant and leave it at a capacity, its existing capacity, pump two M GDs to Sanford, a Big Buffalo Creek plant, and a future regional plant at a future time of one and a half M G D. When you add those flows up, you'll get to a point where it equals the future capacity that you need in 20 years. Alternative three, I looked at a alternative to expand the wastewater treatment plant at the Pittsburgh site now to 1.249 M G D, which is the permitted capacity to Robeson Creek. And then a future regional wastewater treatment plant of 2.75 M GDs at a future time. Alternative four was to convert the Pittsburgh wastewater treatment plant to an equalization type of, use some of the tanks there to, and convert to EQ tanks, pump to Sanford, and then a future regional wastewater treatment plant of the capacity shown in the future. As we went through the process, Chatham Park had all along, had looked at making their own wastewater treatment plant that they were paying for and that they were going to operate as part of the overall way to plan for the future. And alternatives two, three, and four above include a Chatham Park decentralized wastewater treatment plant, which would receive wastewater from, from town residents. And that plant would be at 0.25 milligrams, expandable to half a million gallons per day. That plant is currently very close to being constructed and finished. Next slide, please.
Carl, I have one question.
Yeah.
In alternative four, which shut the future regional wastewater treatment plant at 1.91 million gallons.
Correct.
Where did that one, that 1.9, 1.91, is that what's left on our permit? Is that our maximum amount per day?
Correct. That's what's left to go to the Hall River.
Okay. Okay, I'll have another question later. Thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. And then, so we went through those two alternatives and we looked through, you know, we did a, both a monetary and a non-monetary comparison. And the selected project or selected alternative was alternative four. And that estimated cost at the time of the initial report was 19.7 million dollars. So that was in the 2017 time period where that was estimated. The phase one, what, what this is, what the selected project, project, excuse me, consists of is two phases. The first phase is to pump wastewater to the Sanford, to the town of Sanford, city of Sanford. And that's, we require a new pump station in existing wastewater treatment plant. And then conversion EQ tanks, there'd be certain tanks at the wastewater treatment plant that currently treat wastewater that would instead be converted to EQ tank of volume. And then that would help to dampen out peak flows. And then you would pump up to two M G D on an average basis of wastewater to the Sanford Big Buffalo wastewater treatment plant. As part of this, as this process evolved and moved forward, the town did negotiate and sign an agreement with the Sanford, with the city of Sanford. That agreement is included in the appendix within the E R E I D report. Based on the graph that was shown early, a two M G D capacity is estimated to last anywhere from eight to 10 years in the future. At that point, a phase two of the project, which is not included in this particular funding round or within anything that is done right now in this project, is a future 1.9 M G D wastewater treatment plant with discharge to the Hall River. And again, it notes there that currently this project and project costs and the approval of this E R E I D only covers phase one of this report. A later phase would go through a similar process as now. And that phase one, the phase two of this project is as listed above. As we went through the project, this project, because of the funding aspects of it, requires what they call a finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie. This is triggered by state regulations due to the larger pump station size that's required for this project. And as we'll talk about a little later, this is, is one of the reasons we're even having this public meeting is this Fonzie process.
Carl, one, one question regarding clarification of the 1.91 million gallons per day to the Hall River. It was my understanding that we had a total discharge of 3.22 and 1.249 could go to Robeson and the remainder to the Hall, which would make that figure 1.971? And I'm wondering if that is just a typo in this.
Well, it's really, yeah, it, in reality, it's, we had a, I mean, when we get to that phase two, we would, it might be a little bit higher. And at that 1.91 is what theoretically is needed in addition to the two M G D and the others, other capacity from the decentralized plant to meet the 4.41, that's the projected 20-year flow.
Got it. Okay.
But it would probably be on the future, you would probably do, you know, you do the maximum that the permit has. But, so it's a small difference there, but that's why there's a difference.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next slide, please.
Oh, one other question while we're on that too, sorry. The eight to 10 years that the two million gallons a day is projected to last, is that based on, was that back in 2017?
Or? Yeah, it's, it's based on the growth projections that are within the report.
Okay.
And that was, the, you know, Chatham Park had done projections, we had done projections. And it's based upon that, those projections that are in the report.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily take into account the, like, backlog of projects we have currently?
No, it's not based on them, you know, that, no, it's not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This is the capacity graph, actually kind of helps answer the question you just had. Is, and what this is, is it shows those demands that we, you saw on the earlier graph. And then it shows what kind of steps are needed in capacity as, as time goes by. So if you start from the left-hand side of this graph and move to the right, you're moving in time. And there's a little step you see first, and that's a point two five M G D increase over the existing wastewater treatment plant that is for the decentralized plant. Then this project is constructed. And that provides a two M G D additional capacity. And that's where that next step is, that you see that goes to a capacity of 2.25 M G D. And then there's another step, that's the second phase of the decentralized plant. And that brings it up to two, two and a half M G D. So that's two M G D pumping to Sanford plus point five M G D treated at the decentralized plant. And then when you see that line move out and intersect with the red line, or close to intersecting with the red line, that is when you need your next step increase. And that's the start of, that's really when phase two has to be completed. So at that point, that's the next step up, that's that phase two, the 1.91 M G D. So as you look at that, you're gonna have to plan ahead of those years in order to, you know, design the plant and have it ready to go by that second bigger step there. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. The, the reality of this chart is that everything needs to be shifted at least two years to the right in terms of capacity, correct?
To the left, if you're gonna, right, you know, where we're showing that bigger step, you have to start the design process, you know, probably, you know, two to three years ahead of that.
So, agree, but this is, this chart is showing the Chatham Park plant coming online in 2018?
Yeah, you're right. It's a little bit off because it was a graph from, from an older, yeah, when the report was initially done. So yes, you're correct about that. Yeah, it's kind of just a shift. I mean, yes, you're, you're correct about that. Next graph, or next slide, please. So this is a layout, a graphical layout, the existing, all the new structures are shown kind of in the white outline up to the upper left hand of this figure. The existing units are the two round circles and the other tanks that you see there. And we talked about this site being kind of limited by floodplain. And you can see that with, the green is the floodway of, of the creek, Robeson Creek. And then the blue is the hundred-year floodplain. And then there's another kind of greenish, I call it, I guess it's a lighter greenish, which is the 500-year floodplain. So you can see that the challenge of expanding the plant, and one of the earlier alternatives, was that there wasn't much room to go anywhere. So the, the new pump station and those facilities are up and, up to the left on this figure.
Carl, can we just think about your previous slide again for a moment? I think you said that in order to go beyond the 2.5 million gallons here, that the plant has to be operational? Is that correct?
To make? Yeah, based upon that red line, if it grows as projected on the red line, you would hit, where that red line crosses the two and a half is where you would theoretically run out of capacity.
Yeah, and so just trying to back into when we would have to start designing and building. If it has to be operational on that day that those lines intersect, construction must be complete.
Right, it would have to be complete and the thing ready to start up.
And we've been dealing with a pump station and a force main to Sanford. And I think the original E R E I D was submitted in February of 2016. We are now, you know, going into 2021 and we're just at, we're just in getting permitting. Now, we've designed it, we're trying to get permits, and then I think it's a year and a half of construction. So if the two and a half million is good for, is that an eight to 10-year threshold?
That's right.
Then in about a year or two, we need to start phase two.
Well, the phase two, I wouldn't anticipate it to take as long as this phase one.
Well, I guess that's the question is, I mean, in, in my mind, a new treatment plant and a new discharge point seems to be far more difficult to get permitted than a force main.
Well, we have, you already have your permit. Okay, your, your, your N P D S permit already exists and you already have the permitting you need to do the new discharge. It's already, you already have it. You don't have to go get it. And in terms of the rest, a lot of the reason this project, you know, took longer than normal, you know, was that there was a lot of agreements, the Chatham Park agreement, there was Sanford agreement. And then there was a lot of, there was, I guess, a greater degree of environmental aspects of it that now we can use a lot of what we've already done on the next phase in terms of getting approvals. So I don't anticipate it taking, you know, you know, as near as long to get this one approved. Now, there is, the only caveat I would say to that is that if the town and, you know, chose to try to increase the flow to the Sanford Big Buffalo Creek, that particular option would back you up a little further because in that case, you'd have to get what they call an air-based transfer. Which, so if you wanted to actually pump more wastewater to Sanford instead of building a, the treatment plant in the future, which is still an option if the, you know, at some point the town decides to do that, that there is that option. But that option would take another pretty big regulatory approval. That's anywhere from, you know, three years in that range, three to four years, you know, in practice. But that's not what is in the plan right now. What's in the E R E I D right now is to go ahead and, and not pump any additional to Sanford, but build another, you know, basically a new treatment plant that can pump to the Hall River. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think you're, you're saying that in order to execute phase two, we can rely on a lot of the work we've already done and that should help streamline the process.
Correct.
So does this E R E I D take off the table the ability to pump more to Sanford?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, once you get into phase two, you can, you know, you can do what's here or you can, you know, if you want, you can pump to Sanford. You know, they're not gonna say you can't do that.
But they'll make us justify it with an inter basin transfer?
Yeah, the air basin transfer is, is the, is the, the, the longer process for that route. You know, if you went that direction, you'd have to start that earlier than the other one.
Would the infrastructure that would be in the ground, would that have the capacity to increase flow without building new infrastructure?
You might have to build, you know, you, you may have to build another intermediate pump station.
Okay. But the pipe could remain the same size in the ground?
Yeah, the pipe, the pipe, we, we made big enough for it.
Okay. Now, how, how much additional could it, could that pipe manage?
I'll have to give back to you on that. I don't remember the number, to be honest.
Okay, well, that's good information.
If you, we were to consider the inter, the inter basin transfer, how long would that process take? Do you know offhand if we wanted to increase the amounts going to Sanford and consider that? What would you, as, what time?
As a rule of thumb, as a rule of thumb, I use anywhere from three to five years.
Three to five years.
Because you have to go through the EMC board and it, just from what I've seen in the past, it seems to take, you know, that long to do it.
Okay.
If we were to, in the same right of way, put in another pipe and pump water back up from Sanford to here for water, does that impact the inter basin transfer rules?
Yes, it does. You could, right, that's another way to do it. If you went, if, if you received water back, then, then that's like evening it out, I guess you could say.
Okay.
But whatever cost that would have, you know, have to be taken into account. Next slide, please. I think we talked about that one there. It's a little, you know, it's a little hard to read this one, but the, you know, I just wanted to show you the route, you know, kind of generally. And it starts in the upper right-hand corner where the existing wastewater treatment plant. And this is the force main route. And it, it goes behind some, some neighborhoods and then it heads off in an easement that Chatham Park owns. And then it hits 15501, it follows it basically all the way down south and then branches off of 15501 and goes west over to the Big Buffalo Creek wastewater treatment plant, which is down and down to the lower left. So it's a green square down to the lower left. And as part of this project, you know, we had environmental review along that whole route. And as we went along, we, we, we did some mitigation. I guess I'll be talking about that in a little bit. But just as you visually see it here, we identified wetlands, we identified stream crossings, those kinds of things. And we were able, in the design process, in some cases, we had the directional drill under, under streams and under wetlands as we ran into them. Or we actually rerouted in some cases to go around. But anyhow, it's about, it's roughly 14, I think it's 14.7 miles. It's in that vicinity, the length of the force main. And along this force main, there are valves installed about every 15 to 2,000 feet to allow maintenance of it, you know, to shove off and allow maintenance in certain sections if it ever had to happen. Next slide, please. So this is what I was kind of alluding to earlier, is how were environmental impacts addressed in the E R E I D? There's kind of two parcels, but the projection construction area, which is around the existing wastewater treatment plant, there's a new pump station, and then there's impacts, you know, environmental impacts addressed along the force main route all the way down to Sanford. And as I mentioned, you know, the, the main thing we tried to do is avoid wetland impact via directional drilling and, and via routing force mains around the wetlands. And we were successful in doing that. They really know, we're not impacting any wetlands on the wastewater plant site. And we're not impacting wetlands along the route because we will go, we'll go under them or we avoided them. And as part of this, you do a endangered species review. And the bottom line is along that, because we're doing some of these directions, really avoiding these wet spots, we, we don't have any major impact on the Cape Fear Shiner. And there were not other endangered species that were identified along the route. You know, as with any project, any, any force main project, you, we would, and, and that the wastewater treatment plant, we'd have erosion control measures. And we have Army Corps 401, 404 permits that were obtained as part of the design process. Those permits have been obtained. And, you know, once we get approved on the Fonzie, we're pretty much ready to go to bidding. Now, as part of this, you know, the, the project construction area impacts were done in section seven and appendix G of the report. Later on, D W I, the, the funding agency, the, the state funding agency. Later on, um, D W I, the, the funding agency, the, the state funding agency indicated. They also wanted to have a, um, environmental impact, you know, due to development, basically. And that was Chatham Park, a- and as part of that, um, there was a process that was gone through, and there's an appendix N. Of the E R E I D called secondary cube impacts evaluation, and that's due to development in the Chatham Park or in the town itself. And that, that report, the S C I evaluation is, is limited to. Uh, the area that's involved in this two M G D, uh, expansion. That's Chatham Park and then the Pittsburgh worked together, you know. Mr. Bonics, we're talking about, you know, what were, why were some of the delays, or, you know, why it took a little longer in some cases to get the project. Um, you know, to where it is today, and part of that was, it was about a year process. Where Chatham Park and Pittsburgh, uh, met and made a mitigation agreement. Uh, with D W R and, and what they call Deemer, which is the erosion control people. And that basically was a, an agreement that took about a year. And then that agreement is, is one that, um, helped. To develop the S C I evaluation, and it basically lists out what mitigation measures. Uh, will be, will be done by Chatham Park as part of this project. The S C I details town mitigation measures and additional Chatham Park mitigation measures. So the town has a sets of ordinances, stormwater ordinances, development ordinances. That are detailed in the S C I report in appendix N. Um, they're listed in table N two is probably the best place to go for that as a summary. And then Chatham Park has what they call additional measures that are, that have already been approved by the town. They're also listed in this S C I document, and those are additional measures that Chatham Park has agreed to do. To further lessen environmental impacts from development. And so those, those reports, uh, that report was produced and added to the E R E I D in this last revision. Uh, next slide, please. So the next question is, how is this project funded? The, the, this, this project was funded, the, the, the town, we worked with the town to do an application to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And this fund is money, it's actually federal money that's funneled through the states. Is administrate, it's administered by the, the North Carolina Department of Water Infrastructure, also known as D W I. And D W I is the one I've been working with, uh, for the last four years to get the E R E I D approved. Um, and so the required, you know, the way that the whole E R E I D is structured and formatted and stuff. Is, is dictated by, uh, D W I. After the application was submitted, uh, there was a, a funding, uh, round and, and. Pittsburgh was selected to receive the funds, and D W I sent what they call an intent to fund letter. Back in twenty sixteen, and at that time, the eligible loan amount for the project. Was set at twenty one million five hundred eighty five thousand dollars. So what the town has now through the loan program. Is that is the eligible amount for loan, and that covers not only the project costs. But also you can fold in the E R E I D costs, you fold in the design costs into that number. So that, that loan amount is there to cover not only the construction, but also the design costs that the town incurred. Um, plus other, other costs, any land costs, any other kind of costs, easement costs. That the town has incurred can be rolled into that. Now, this loan is, you know, the reason you go with D W I funding is you have a lower interest rate. And that, and that, the, the interest rate that was provided to the town is one point eight four percent. There is also a two percent loan origination fee for the D W I loan that the town has to pay on their own. And that loan fee is not folded into the loan amount of the project above it. So it's not part of the twenty one thousand five hundred eighty five thousand. So the town, that origination fee is like a, it's a fee that the town pays separately to D W I. That's, uh, above and beyond the, the loan amount listed. Now, that eligible loan amount was based on a, on a estimate at the time that the D W I funding was submitted. Uh, the actual loan will be based on big costs after the contractor bidding is done. So you do the contractor bidding, you get the bids, uh, you know, typically the low bidder is picked. And then you add on the, the design costs, these are the costs I'm talking about for the E R E I D. And then at that town, at that time, then the actual project cost will be known. And then, then the town would obligate to that loan amount, whatever it is after bidding. And, and right now, you, you know, that cost could be up to twenty one million five hundred eighty five thousand. Now, just so everybody knows, there is a, about a ten percent. Additional potential funding if, if, if for any reason the bidding should be higher than we expect. You know, D W, uh, D W L typically allow a ten percent increase in that loan without a whole lot of extra work being required. Um, now, Chatham Park, eh, through agreements with the town, has. Agreed to pay, uh, sixty two and a half percent of the D W I loan cost. You know, and, and that sixty two and a half percent of the twenty one five eighty five is around thirteen point five million. The town is responsible for paying the other thirty seven and a half percent of the project cost. Um, in addition, Chatham, there's an, an agreement with Chatham Park regarding, uh, there's a Sanford, the Sanford Agreement requires. That the town buy in for that reserve capacity of two M D D that they're gonna get. They have to buy into the plant at Sanford, and tha- that's what they call a reserve fee. Is that, that reserve fee holds that two million dollar, I'm sorry, two million gallons for the town. They can't give it to anybody else, it's for the town, it's, it's, it's what it is. And Chatham Park agreed also with the town to pay approximately twenty five, well, to pay twenty five percent. Of that agreement capacity, and there's other provisions within that agreement. Um, that'll help cover, um, other shortfalls if the town, um, you know, needs it. It, it's kind of complicated and to get into it is, is not within the scope of this presentation. Uh, next slide, please.
One, one question on that, with the origination fee. Um, is it as simple as saying the effective interest rate is three point, uh, eight four percent? Or, or is it something different?
The origination fee is a, basically a lump sum of money, basically. And D W I will say, okay, your loan is X amount, two percent of that is X amount. And we, we want you to pay that, and the town has to figure out whether it's gonna come from reserve, you know. The sewer fund, or it's gonna come from however they decide to fund that. That's a separate chunk of money that basically is given to D W I at the time that the loan is originated. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it, it wouldn't be compounded like the, like the interest rate?
No, it's, it's like, uh, it, it's basically like a down payment on your house or something, you pay that money and then it, that's that. It, there's no, there's no fee on it other, I mean, there's no compound or anything on that. Finally, the, the D W I requires that a financial evaluation be done, and they have a standard. Way they want you to do that in the report, so they can approve the report. And there's a, there's a workbook and it's in appendix H, if anybody's interested in looking at it, there's like. Eight tables that track it from, from the estimated costs and, and what the existing, you know, what the user rates are through to. Uh, to what is needed to, to fund the project from a user standpoint. What they require is that. That you look at this as the first loan, you know, when the first loan payment is due after construction. Is when you have to look at this, this, you know, what, what would be the user? And typically, you know, you can, you'll get the loan after you bid. And after you, so you close on the loan, and then you can use the loan money. To pay, to pay the contractor, and then after the construction is complete. Then, then you have to start your first payment. So you have a couple of year period, you know, whatever the construction period is, you know, in this case, you know, the, the contracting period is fifteen months. I- in, in our contracts, so the longest contract is fifteen months. And so after a year and three months. You know, you can pay the contractor and then you wouldn't have a loan payment due until it's typically. They set the loan in the fall or in the spring, you know, the first payment. So it kind of depends when your project ends as to when your first payment is due. The estimated D W I loan annual repayment, based upon a nineteen point seven million dollar project cost. Is listed here in the next bullet. Um, and Chatham Park would pay approximately sixty two percent of that, which is also shown on the bullet there. Um, the Sanford reserve fee i- i- within this report was, was estimated at two hundred and thirty eight thousand per year. And Chatham Park would pay twenty five percent of that, which is, which is listed in the parentheses. So the net estimated payment by Pittsburgh in the first year that the loan is due. Um, first loan payment is due is, is six hundred eighty six thousand sox dollars. Um, now, you know, the D W I requires an evaluation of sewer rates. A sewer rate increase pre- presuming or assuming. Uh, that the town system does not add any new rate payers by the time the first loan payment is due. And for that situation, which is a theoretical situation. The cost is, the estimated increase in, in the user rate is twenty three dollars a month sewer rate for a typical user. Now, you know, I've, I've talked to town manager. And he has indicated Pittsburgh has approximately two million dollars in retained sewer front earnings that could potentially be used. For some of these initial loan payments versus increasing rates. Now, the question is, well, you know. In reality, once, as, when you, once the town starts approving developments, there's gonna be new years is added. The question is kind of when, when would those come in or what would be needed? To, to cover this additional revenue needed, you know, how many new customers and, and at the existing user rates of today. You know, it's estimated the town would need approximately fourteen hundred new customers to raise this six hundred eighty thousand. On the, I'm talking about, of additional revenue. Now, looking at, you know, the growth rates that we showed you earlier in the presentation. You know, that is estimated to take two to three years to reach that threshold per, per the growth rates that were shown earlier. Now, this is not a promise of any certain time period or any, it's just based on the estimates. It's the best estimates we have based upon what's presented in E R E I D. And I guess I'll let that sink in before we move into the next one. Any questions on that part that I've covered?
Yes, Carl, excuse me, can we go back to your? Fifth bullet on the financial evaluation page?
Sure.
Um, I, I didn't catch how you reached six hundred and eighty six thousand.
Okay, that's equal to, um, if you took the loan amount of, in the third bullet.
Yep.
It's basically taking the loan amount in the third bullet, which is one point three five million. Subtracting out Chatham Park's amount, which is point eight five million. And then adding the Sanford reserve fee, which is.
Oh, got it.
Two hundred and thirty eight point two three eight.
Thank you.
That's how that number has arrived at.
And Carl, I think it also includes in the Chatham reserve fee, not only an addition of two hundred and thirty eight, but the. Uh, reduction of Chatham Park's percentage.
Yes.
Is that reserve fee paid each year until we reach two million in flow? Or is that just continuous for the length of the agreement?
I have to say, I don't remember if that's a twenty year loan repayment. There's different ways to, to repay that, I don't know if Paul remembers.
As I recall, there was a schedule there.
Yeah. And we had a schedule in the report, I'll have to get back to you on that, I don't have that.
Mr. Messick, do you recall?
Uh, the capacity fee is paid over a twenty year term, the Chatham Park contribution is paid over a ten year term. So they're gonna pay it out earlier than you will face Sanford.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, thank you.
And, and I don't remember the total amount, but, um, we certainly can give that to you.
Um, next slide, please. So I just wanted to kind of close with what the next steps are going forward. So the first step going forward is to receive and respond to comments from this public meeting. What, what D W I requires is that we have a, um. A log or whatever of question, you know, of questions during this meeting and answers provided during this meeting. And any other answers we provide later. And then what I do is I put together and I include this presentation that you see in front of you. I include what the comments, what, what questions were received, and any, any response to those comments. And then I add, add that information, uh, from this meeting into an appendix in the E R E I. And then when, and then I have to basically, you know. Provide that to D W I again, so they needed our hard copy of the whole report with that added in. And then what's going on right now is there, the D W I produces what's called a clearinghouse document. And that's sent out to the public, it's a shortened version of the E R E I D, basically. And that goes out to public, the, what they call the Fonzie project, I'm sorry, process. And there's a thirty day public comment period. And then, once that comment period is over, the comments are in, then the town receives all comments and has to address the public comments. And at that point, that's again is slipped into the E R E I D, what was, what was, uh. What those comments were and what, how they were addressed. And then D W I will receive the E R E I D again with, with that information in it. And review it, and then they would have, you know, the next step down would be for approval and of the E R E I D. And once the E R E I D is approved, then the design plans and specifications can be approved. At this point, we had, we had done these simultaneously all along, so the design's all done, and it's already submitted. And we've been, it's indicated to us that the design will be approved. Oh, you know, once this E R E I D is approved, as far as we're, we've been told. At that point, you would bid, the, the, you'd go ahead and let the bids out, there's two contracts for this. There's a pump station contract at the existing plant, and then there'll be a second contract, which is the force main work itself. And the idea there is to get, is to get the, uh, the best, uh, contract price as possible for the town. Then those bids come in, we look at them, and we make a recommendation to the town. Uh, to accept or not accept them, and we provide that recommendation to D W I. And then, so D W I has to approve the bids, and then a final loan amount is determined. And then they do go through the loan offer process, and you'll have to go to L G C for approval. Uh, typically, D, D W I, once you've gone through the E R E I D process, you know, L G C will typically look to D W I. In terms of, you know, their approval, in terms of looking at how they, how they look at things. I'm in this case, so I wouldn't anticipate a lot of problem with L G C, but you do have to have an approval from them. And, uh, then like I mentioned, the overall construction period is fifteen months construction time. Now, at this point, what's happening now on the D W I side is they are, they are making, they're doing the clearinghouse already. Once we notified them of the public hearing, of the person at D W I that starts to make that clearinghouse report, they've already started that effort. So hopefully, what will happen here is that, at the end of the thirty day public comment period for the, for the Fonzie process. And when we get, um. And from these public meeting notes, those will all kind of coincide and, and then we'll, we'll get our approval. Now, I can't, I don't know what the public comments are gonna be, we'll have to see and, and, you know, if there's anything that, you know. We'll have to a- address those public comments. So this is kind of what the next steps are.
And Carl.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, uh, the thirty day public comment period begins tonight?
No, it, it begins, what happens is it doesn't begin tonight, no. We have to submit the public, we, we get the comments back on this particular meeting. And then we, we, I have to incorporate that into the E R E I D. I have to resubmit the E R E I D to DWI. And once I do that, then they send it out, then they send it out to the public. And once they do what they call clearinghouse, there's a process for that where they announce it and they advertise it. And once that's done, that starts the thirty day period. So there's, so it does not start with tonight's meeting. So I anticipate we get this done, uh, you know, we'll, we'll submit the, you know, the comments and any questions, answers to the comments as soon as we can here. And we'll get it over to DWI and then, you know, whenever they get done making what they call the clearinghouse document, that's kind of out of our hands, but they've indicated to me they'll try to do this, you know, they're already starting that document. So as soon as we get this in, I don't anticipate a long time period before they get the clearinghouse document out for review. Well, that concludes uh, the presentation. I mean, the next slide is just any, any further questions, if there's any out there.
Two, two questions, Carl. Uh, when we talk about the future regional treatment plan, what region does that refer to?
Well, it refers to the, the time in the report, it for, it re- it refers to basically, you know, Pittsburgh. Okay.
Okay.
We're, we're not really, I mean, it was a, it was kind of a holdover from, you know, Chatham Park, it was, you know, the thought of Chatham Park and Pittsburgh, but it's, it's all the same really now. You know, you know, Chatham Park resident is a Pittsburgh resident, so.
Okay, alright.
I hope that answers the question. So
Yes, it does.
It's a little bit of a holdover, but to go back and revise the whole report, you know, it, it becomes a
No, uh, understood.
A, a delay in the project, basically, and we don't want any more delays.
No.
And it doesn't materially affect anything in the, in the.
And does the reuse water, like for example, that we send to three M, that reduces our overall discharge, correct?
Correct.
So we're finding another large user that, that could help us.
Yeah, could help even more, right? Because what's happened is decentralized plant, you know, the, the goal there is to have that discharge from that go to Robeson Creek. You know, that's what, there's a permit process happening there, but, but yes, whatever you, whatever you send to three M now, you know, is take, i- is not counted in the flow that goes to the river or to Robeson Creek. So in rally, you could send, if, if you're sending it more to three M, you could actually have more than the one point two four nine million come into the, you know, come into the plant. As long as you're sending it out, but it, it could be kind of complicated, to be honest, because you know, I guess you can, you can, you get a variation in that flow and, but it could, it could be counted that way, yes. Does that make any sense? Like confuse the matter? I don't think confused.
No, no, you answered it. Thanks.
Okay.
Carl, what is the uh, the phrase for that alternate source of discharge that um, allows you to rely on it and permit it?
I'm not sure I understand.
There's, you've, you've got, in other words, we could treat uh, one point two four nine million gallons a day at the plant and discharge zero into the stream if we had this other location where we could discharge it.
Yeah, if you had, if you had, well, if you had a reuse water.
Right, right.
If it was a reuse quality and you had users that could use it.
Yeah.
You could, you could.
Yeah, there's a, uh, there's a phrase about that alternative discharge source or uh, location where it gets used up. I just thought it'd be a, uh, handy to know that because it's quite descriptive in, in conveying the message.
Yes.
And I don't, I can't recall.
Coming to mind right now, I'm sorry.
Mine, me neither.
Maybe it's late at night. I can't think of it. I, you know, I'm not, I always think of it as reuse water or.
Yeah. The long-term application source or something like that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, drawing a blank at the moment.
But yes, the reuse, as long as we've got a reliable user, um, can be deducted from the discharge amount and increase the plant's capacity, so to speak.
Yeah, in- increase what you would, yeah, discharge to, you're right. It, they just care what goes out to the river or the creek. That's what you're, that's what you're permitted on.
Are there, are there questions from commissioners or from those that have joined us, participants?
Man, I don't, I don't have a question, but just maybe a comment. On, uh, thanks Carl for the presentation. Uh, I'm just a little concerned on the eight to ten years for this two million gallons a day. I, I think our numbers are going to be, I think with it, well, I'm trying to say, I guess I think we're going to need more uh, M G Ds before eight to ten years. I think we got some issue, a lot of construction coming on and uh, and I heard one time, I think a gentleman engineer gave us a term that you, you, if you started a plant, you could be looking at five to seven years. So uh, uh, it looks like, you know, our work's cut out right now down the road.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. That's why I asked about that, our inter basin transfer and how long that would take, because it may be that we would have to increase the amounts that goes to Sanford, since it would be, if we did try to build another plant, it would be, that would be, take a long time. So that may be something that we may have to look at.
I, I think it would be a good idea, you know, if, if the town wants to consider that, that they get it going as soon as possible, to be honest.
Alright, thanks Carl.
Anything else? Anybody that's tuned in that has questions or comments from the public?
Cassie, are folks able to um, speak and be heard?
They can, as long as they raise their hand, then I can make them a panelist.
Okay.
We did receive one um, from Liz. Messick, are you going to talk about that?
Uh, the town received an email from Liz Cullington, uh, which you all, um, if, if we can share with you in the morning. And that will be part of the response to the DWI.
I don't show that anyone has waved their hands to speak.
Alright. Well, in that case, uh, I would suggest we could move on if someone, uh, before we close out the meeting tonight, does raise their hand and want to do, come back and make a comment concerning this uh, item, I, I think I would certainly entertain that uh, in order to make the record as complete as possible. So, uh, Carl, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome and is it okay if I leave the meeting?
I would think so. Uh, I mean, certainly if we do get some uh, question. Please on, we can get them to you and, and get those responded to and make them part of the record. So.
I think you might want to, you know, it'd be good to, to, you know, to close a public meeting, I guess.
Yes, exactly. That's what we'll need to do.
Okay.
Carl, thank you so much for your help.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carl.
I would, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, um, because I got Bonnet's to say, oh, Fio, okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Carl.
Very welcome. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Carl. Alright, so uh, now we're at the point of adoption of the agenda and would entertain a motion to uh, adopt the uh, agenda or to change it in some way?
Motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ananamous. Alright, so the first item is manager updates and since our manager is out tonight, uh, I don't have any updates and I'll start with the commissioners going from around our uh, non-virtual table. Commissioner Farrell, anything?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ship?
Yes, on the uh, Boys and Girls Club, we got um, some new members on the committee, uh, both, I think from the interest of the media articles and then also from some referrals of current members. So that's uh, really good. We're expanding the committee. Uh, we've received the first donations to the club, um, and those are, those are starting to come in now. So that's really encouraging. Um, and then I will also be uh, presenting uh, next Monday at the county commissioner's meeting to give them uh, an update on the club as well.
Great.
Commissioner Ship, can you please remind us how donations should be addressed, addressed or directed?
Uh, sure. Yeah, thank you. Uh, the Central Carolina Boys and Girls Club, they, as the parent organization there, uh, if you go to their donate page, there's an option for the founder's campaign for uh, the Pittsburgh Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thanks. Good. Thanks for asking, bringing that up. Um, and then also uh, Wednesday is Veterans Day and so um, I know the V F W will be out uh, at various locations around town, uh, distributing Buddy Poppies. Um, and I suspect some other organizations and uh, events are happening as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fioco?
Um, yes, I can give some updates. Economic Development Corporation, the next meeting is tomorrow morning and I will be in attendance. Thanks Kyle for uh, jumping in when I, when I could not, um, but I'm able to make this one. Uh, downtown, happy to say that the N C D O T has signed the contract for the circle improvements and expects to break ground in January and be done uh, complete before October two thousand twenty one. So that's going to be exciting. And on the main street front, a corollary there is one of the key components of the circle project is going to be uh, pavers put into the northwest and northeast corners, those parking fields. Uh, so be a beautification of the area and working with the owners of the Welcome Center and the adjoining property to see if they can um, expand the paver pattern into the parking lot of the Welcome Center and up to the building where the hairstylist is uh, right next door to Blue Dot. So that would be a really nice improvement and um, working through that to see if that's a feasible for those owners to do that. The Welcome Center is, uh, has a goal of opening around Thanksgiving. So I, I know we've got COVID kind of on the rise, um, but we'd like to open the, the space and, uh, you know, have very limited access to it. Uh, some retailers are recently opening and they're just limiting their occupancy as a way to kind of maintain a healthy situation. So we're, we're thinking along the same lines. Parks and Rec uh, is rescheduling the November meeting to December, so um, I'll be attending that on December ninth and the P B A's next meeting is Wednesday morning. And I'll be attending that as well. And Triangle Area Rural Planning Organization, the next meeting is December tenth. And my intent is to attend that as well.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bonnet?
No, sir. Nothing to update.
Okay, I would then uh, entertain a motion to either approve or modify the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous. Alright. Uh, there's no uh, public hearings or next item of business is the sewer allocation request Echo C P Partners. And is there anyone from planning with this?
Um, Mayor, I thought that was going to be tabled until next meeting, November twenty third.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't someone to explain that. Uh, the request of the town manager is that we uh, continue this uh, until the November twenty third uh, Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ananamous. Alright, and then uh, miscellaneous none. Any final comments or items from any of the commissioners?
I've got a, a couple of things that I'd like to see if we can get updates on status at our next meeting. Uh, we had in our budget a water loss study and um, looking at our local water supply plan, you know, provided a lot of great information and I do have some questions on that document as to whether or not those numbers indicate we are, you know, making a lot of water, but uh, losing it in our system. So um, I'd like to know, have we been able to make any progress with our water, water loss study? Um, another item of, of concern was the lighting of the traffic circle out at C C C C. I think there was some N C D O T movement on that in the last couple of months, but just uh, would like to get an update, see where we stand on that. And also the Robeson Creek Trail paving improvements, um, see if we've made any progress there. So if we could have a report on those three items at the next meeting, I'd appreciate that.
I will advise the town manager.
Thank you, Cassie.
Any, uh, anyone else? Alright, well then, if there's no further business to come before the board tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Good night.
Aye.
Good, good night all.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great week.
Have a great week. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.